That we shot with one of our drones to kind of give you a full scale. What the facility looks like. Uh, the next page, I included some of the project status and schedule stuff. So the substantial completion for the UV system was March fifteenth of this year. That was to meet your DNR deadline, which was met. That system's up and running and you'll get to see some photos later on of the bulbs actually on and the whole building. Um, the substantial completion for the project is scheduled for December thirty first of this year. And by the looks of things, they're well on track to hit that quite easily. Um, same goes for the final completion of June first of next year. Um. As of last week, when I made this up, uh, it's six point five of the eight point five million has been billed. Be it work or materials, um, which puts the project at about seventy-five percent complete. Um, with the payout actually tonight, that puts it just over eighty percent complete. So we're, we're doing really good.
Awesome.
On the next page. It's the photo of the front of the headworks building. Um, obviously the driveway is not in, that mud will be gone. Uh, but you'll get to see, you can see the block face, um, you got the big garage door. Kind of how the building's set up. On the next page, it's the south facing side where you have all the influence comes into the building. You can kind of see that structure in the bottom. And then on the right side is the screening and grit room. We took these photos about a week, week and a half ago. I stopped out tonight before, uh, coming here and it looks completely different already. They have pretty much all of the equipment in there. Some of it still needs bolted down, but all of the equipment's in there, so it's, it's pretty cool. Um, and you keep going, there's just some more general photos, not much to look at quite yet. Um, you got the electrical room, you can see all the conduits that'll be stubbed up. And then, um, on the other one will be the laboratory room. And then you'll have bathroom and whatever else. Um, and then on page six, um, that's your influence structure. So you can kind of see the, the, the flumes, which is what measures the flow coming in. So we know how much the plant's seeing. Um, and then there's some overflow finger wears. So if there's a large storm event, that's automatically going to overflow and go out to your storage bonds instead of, um, harming, harming the facility. And then if you keep going. There's a photo of the UV building. It's a little bit different color than the headworks building, but it still looks nice.
Good east high color.
Uh, and then the next page, there's the control panels. Um, and then the photo on the right, you can see the, this basically just the stairs going down. There's not a whole lot to look at in this room. Uh, and then if you go to the next, you'll get to see like actually down in the lower level of the UV room. And you can see the blue bulbs glowing. Those are the UV bulbs that are disinfecting everything, making sure it's clean before it goes out into the, the receiving stream. And then after that, there's some more photos of the outside of the building and the effluent lift station. Um, this, just quick little info on this, this lift stations if, um, wherever to have a massive flood like oh eight. Um, the plant isn't going to back up. This is going to force all the water out, so you don't have to worry about the facility being underwater again.
Plus we have the berm there too.
Yes. That'll also help quite a bit. Um, and then that next page, the miscellaneous items page, you can kind of see, try to capture part of that berm. Just to show you how tall it actually is. And then on page twelve, we have the splitter box. Um, this just helps control the flow, the, control the process and going from stage to stage. And then there's the new blowers. I don't know how many of you've been out there before, and I guess in the photo you can kind of see the old massive blowers. Um, and just with today's new tech tal- technology, that's how much smaller the same sized blowers are. Then on the next page, um, this is the big one, the anaerobic and the toxic tank. This is what's going to help you guys get your ammonia numbers down and get within limits that DNR has placed on you. Um, and then we got some more flow control wears, um, there's a UV bypass. Um, so you don't have to UV disinfect you around in the winter. Um, the bugs can't grow or the, the E. coli can't grow, so you don't have to worry about disinfecting. So that's a, a bypass valve, so you can go around the UV system and that's a perfect time for maintenance or cleaning or whatever else needs to be done. And then that last, last page, it's another kind of aerial shot. And, uh, you can definitely on that left-hand side, you can definitely see the berm and just how big it, it really is. You guys have any questions? I know I ran through that kind of quick.
Absolutely, yeah. If anyone wants to see him, yep.
Alright, well if there's any questions, Deanna has my contact, feel free. Um, and if council ever wants to set up a time to go out and to other place, we can definitely get somebody coordinated to go out and answer questions and show you guys around.
Is it to a place where we could actually drive into there again or not?
Um, on a dry day like today, I made it in with my car, um, but if it's rained, it's probably still a little muddy.
Yeah.
I'd say maybe a month or two, they should have all the rock down.
Okay.
Just based off what I saw tonight. Looks like they were getting the final grades of the, sorry. They're getting the final grading of the roadway done tonight, uh, when I was out there, so it should be close.
It's been a very smooth project. Um, they're doing a great job and just, they're, uh, really good with communicating and you guys are great with communicating with us as well.
Yeah.
So we really appreciate that.
Waterfus has done a really good job.
Yeah, they have.
It's turning out really nice.
It does.
Awesome, well thank you guys.
You bet, thank you Trey. Number six on our agenda is public discuss- discussion. Uh, if you could please come up to the podium, um, we need neither your name nor your address.
Something on this agenda tonight kind of makes me wonder, uh, item eighteen, maybe I'll feel better about it when you talk about it. Says council to amend the general rules for public participation during council meetings. I would think if anything, you would want more people to be able to talk. Instead of cutting us off and whatever, what is it all about?
That wasn't the intention of amending, um, that. We were just, our city attorney suggested we made some amendments and actually overwritten, uh, overwrote a lot of things that we had on there already. So, and it was really for First Amendment.
Hmm, so we'll still get to talk.
It is, it's actually a better improved.
That's what I want to know, that's why I said, after I hear what you have to say about it, maybe I'll feel different. But this kind of makes you feel like you want us not to talk anymore is what it makes me feel.
No, and actually, actually quite the, actually quite the opposite John, yeah.
Not true.
Thanks John.
That's good that we don't give our name and address anymore.
Unless you want to, I mean, if you want to for the record, then you can.
First of all, I want to start off thanking the, uh, fire department and the community for the event last weekend. I was down there Friday night. I, I was roaming around, I watched the fireworks, I think it was a fantastic weekend. I didn't come Saturday because we had to move our daughter again. Um, but I want to congratulate the fire department, everybody was involved that helped out down there. I think it was a good event, so I want to make sure that I said that publicly. And number two, as far as that amendment that John was talking about, I'd like to put in front of the council. An amendment that would allow citizens, if you call in before noon on the council day, you can have five minutes to talk at meetings. Waterloo does it, Cedar Falls does it. I think it's only fair because sometimes when you get into dialogue, you get cut off, you get told, oh, you got forty-seven seconds. Maybe in five minutes, we wouldn't have that negativity going on and we'd be able to get everything out that we want to express. So I was told by the mayor, it's the council decision, so I'm asking you if you would take a look at that. Make an amendment and put that into those rules and regulations going forward. Thank you.
Thank you Steve. And just so you know, it's not to inconvenience you to come up to the podium, but since we do, uh, televise and have available on YouTube and our website. People cannot hear you in the back of the room.
Would it be easier maybe just over by Sandy? Sandy would be able to just borrow your microphone?
He's still on camera.
Yep, I was going to say, I think we can get him up closer.
Okay, I, Mark Atkins, nine oh nine Third Avenue, Evansdale, Iowa. I don't know if this is the time, if stuff, is this for stuff that's not on the agenda or on the agenda or ongoing things that are going on?
It's just time for public discussion.
Number one is I want to know when the police contract thing is doing, if negotiations are going on and who's doing negotiation with Alcoron. They, I really feel straight out that they ought to be paying per capita the same thing that Evansdale residents pay. They get the same service we get, twenty-four hour service. If they get a, if they get a call in Evansdale, Alcoron, they're going to go to it. They provide twenty-four hour service, same as we get, and there's no reason that they're paying what fifty-some thousand dollars a year. And we have over a million some dollar is what our cost for running the police department is. Fair's fair. A lot of people order to say the same thing, you talk to them, well, you know, they, they agree that it ought to be just split it out per capita. And that's, that's, that's a fair system to be in. I, I'd like to know when the contract is being negotiated, when it's coming up due. I believe it's this year, I heard every year I hear it's on next year, next year. Well, I think we're in the year and it's time to get something done and make it fair for Evansdale residents. There's no reason when somebody lives on this side of McCoy, they're paying five, six, seven times more than the, the same service the guy gets living across the street. And I don't know, I heard the way it was originally negotiated and I don't think is right, but to our Evansdale residents, fair is fair. And it, it goes to every service we give them. The brush dump, I mean, you take the brush dump, the number of hours that end loader running back and forth, they're not paying near what our residents are paying. So I think it all needs to be looked at and let's make it fair for Evansdale residents too. And Raymond, I believe they're using our brush dump, the same goes for them, split it, split it out per capita. You know, being big brother neighbor to somebody else isn't, you know, we still can help out with certain things, but. Let's, let's get at it. When is, when is the contract due, Deanna?
Um, for Evansdale law enforcement, our Alcoron law enforcement, it's next year. So that'll be something that will be brought up during budget and same with the yard raised agreements.
Well.
And you have thirty seconds left.
Okay, different subject. Wastewater, the engineers here, but when this contract was originally done to redo our sewer plant, it was based on, we had to make our sewer plant. To handle the amount of stuff we had coming in. Our problem, I've been here for twenty years saying the amount of infiltration into our sewer lines is.
Your time is up Mark.
I thought it was per subject.
This is just, it's three minutes for public discussion.
I don't, okay.
Anyone else this evening?
Yes.
Okay.
My name's Elaine Hammer. Um, my question is concerning the, the curb of our streets where there's numerous, many elm trees growing out of them. Um, who, who is to take care of that? Does the city, does the resident that lives by that curb supposed to kind of clean that up or keep it clean or keep it? We, we did our neighbors for him because he usually has done it, um, Wilson there and, uh, he had so many along there, we cut them and sprayed them so they'd die.
Thank you for that by the way.
Um, and there's more that should be done, but I'm just wondering who? Is it the city that ki- I know it's probably not a priority, but it is unsightly and it is not good for the, you know, curb and.
Right, it is the responsibility of the homeowner.
It is, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
All the way to the curb.
That's what I thought, but there's nothing probably to really enforce any of that. But you may see me driving around town just doing it places, because I hate seeing them. So I'm just into that, so I'm just checking, it is the residence, so. And I can always check with the residents, see if they, if I'm out there, this is what I'm doing.
And we actually have put out in the past too, and I thank you again for that because I kind of went over there that night and then the next day I, all those trees going out of the curb disappeared.
Yeah.
So, um, it is a responsibility absolutely of the homeowner.
Okay.
And it's unfortunate, yes, we do have that problem in our city. Um, you know, we tried to address it with letters and such like this. We also have, you can adopt a stormwater because some of the, some of that has caused it to go down.
Right.
Into the stormwater area that, you know.
There's some growing right around the stormwater area.
Right, you know, and it's, you know, feel free, don't think you have to do it, but generally speaking, our, generally speaking, our crew will get that stuff when they're cleaning the stormwater systems.
Right, right, okay, just wanted to know.
Yeah.
Thanks.
No, and thank you again. Anyone else this evening? Okay, item seven, approval of consent agenda. Take a motion to approve please.
Make that motion.
Okay, both. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight, approval of the resolution calendar.
Make a motion to approve the resolution calendar.
Second.
Roll call please.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Uh, yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dee Water?
Yes.
Number nine is resolution sixty-eight seventy-two, approving development agreement with QuickTrip.
Make a motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
Roll call please.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dee Water?
Yes.
Number ten is resolution sixty-eight seventy-three, approving development agreement with Freedom Truck and Trailer Wash LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dee Water?
Yes.
Resu- number eleven, resolution sixty-eight seventy-four, approving lease agreement with John Breskern for nine fifty-two Gilroyville Road. As well as with Lee Shute, uh, doing business as JB Pools for nine fifty-two Gilroyville Road.
So moved. Second.
Roll call please.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dee Water?
Yes.
Number thirteen is request to approve bridge inspection quote with Chuck Britson in the amount of three thousand five hundred and ten dollars as budgeted for FY twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Wanting out a resolution?
No.
No.
It was just a request.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This bridge, the one up on, by the highway?
Um, it's all of our bridges, so it's Dubuque Road, we have two bridges. Um, we have a bridge over of course, um, West Gilbert and we also have the bridge, um, for the old Sixth Street access.
You know, and I go back a long ways. I sat in on the council meeting, if you want me to get up, I'll go.
Please.
I sat in in more than one council meeting and when they got done with, uh, agreeing to fix that bridge, they told the people that lived up there, that would be the last time that the city of Evansdale was responsible for that bridge. And if you get back into the, if you check this out, I think you're going to find that too. That's what they were told.
Wow.
I know that's what they were told. I'll bet you'll find it. Yeah, I'll bet you'll find it.
Why would we ever say that?
Because it costs too much money and they tried to buy them out, they wouldn't let them buy them out, everything else, and they said that was it, they're not fixing it anymore.
Yeah, well.
Check back and see what you can find out.
I will, actually, I, I didn't realize that.
Because boy, I, I am sure that is exactly what they were told.
From, from experience.
Having come forward please.
From beyond the council before and everything, there's right, there was right away along the interstate at that time that they could put it in and come out on. I can't think of any addition up there, eighty's addition, and come out through that here, there was a way to put a sixteen foot wide roadway along the interstate. They're to run, that they could get to the houses rather than repair the bridge.
Yeah, uh, we looked at that, I was on the council at that time. We looked at that and the neighbors on that street, I don't know, Oak something or other there, where Catwigs lived.
Oak didn't, oh, you're talking Timber Oak.
Yeah, Timber Oak.
Yeah.
They absolutely hit the fan.
It's just the way you in and out.
Yeah, well, so that idea dropped immediately.
Did I get it all in favor? How often are we required to have our bridges inspected?
Federal requirement.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Fourteen, request to approve right-of-way agreement with Lumen Century Link.
So moved.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Fifteen, request from code enforcement to have a dead tree removed from three hundred grand boulevard. Just a little side story to this, um, there was some pretty sizable limbs falling off the street into the roadway. So it was, our pedestrians, our people driving down the street were in imminent danger. Um, our crew went out that day because the larger of the limbs was gonna fall right back into the roadway as well. So they did go, um, I guess that's a motion for me to be quiet now. Uh, so they, so they did go and remove that limb and, um, it, uh, we had Drew with, um, Plan Terry, Tree Service come out that day. And he said it needed to be removed sooner than later. They have fourteen days right now, um, I don't think that's up until next Wednesday. So I just want to have in the agenda, you know, to have it, you know, we could work with them. They do have time yet, um, but it may be something that the city may have to, um, do and assess to their taxes. If you have any questions, that'd be great.
So as in if they don't do it by next Wednesday, we move in, we do it and send them the bill basically?
Yeah.
Is there any current public safety concern now that the initial branches and stuff have been removed?
No, but Drew did say it needed to be removed as soon as possible, yeah, no.
Is Wednesday even too late or something? I just, you know, I don't want somebody to get hurt or cause an accident before then.
No, we went in and took the dangers.
Got the necessary ones done, okay.
This boils back to, uh, I guess accountability. Uh, the dead tree thing is what caught me on the agenda. I could give you a list of probably ten residents in this town that have dead trees that are next to the sidewalk or hanging over the sidewalk. And I think the city crew has even went out and cleaned up branches off of Gilbert Drive next to your house. And I know they took a tree down, but there's more to come down that are dead and I'm not going to go into a bunch of other ones. But I'm just asking if we're going to be concerned about dead trees and the reason I bring this up, we had a conversation last year about Norma Avenue. I hope we do it consistently and I'm not going to participate in neighbors turning in neighbors, I think that's a terrible thing to ask. But I'm asking the building inspector and the street department that drives the streets many times a day, if they see a dead tree, report it and follow this same procedure. I would love to see that, that everybody gets the same treatment, rather than one thing, it's a safety issue. There's other ones in town that are safety issues and I've never heard it come up. And I'm just asking, let's, let's, let's be continuous continuity on this, if we're gonna go after dead trees, there isn't, there, I brought the resolution, there is a resolution about trees. So if we're gonna do that, it goes back to everything that I've talked about in the past. Consistency to everybody, not just chosen ones because it's a danger or because we know them or we don't know them or whatever. I want the council to drive around and if you want a list of trees in the town that are dead, I can give you a list of trees that are dead. They might not be all safety minded, but they're dead trees and that falls under the policy. Thank you, my council.
Yeah, thank you Steve. I'll take a motion.
I move to, uh, go with that request.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number sixteen, request to approve propane purchase agreement for winter twenty-four twenty-five in the amount of two thousand three hundred and ten dollars with Consolidated Energy and authorized merit to sign said document.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, there was amendment, number seventeen, there was amended amendment, we actually at our last meeting, signed the, the waiver of conflict. And then now we had to bring it back as the agreement with just Alcoron had been updated. So it's to approve the amended VACOL twenty-eight eighty agreement with Alcoron Heights.
Move to accept the agreement with Alcoron Heights.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eighteen, council to amend general rules for public participation during council meetings. Like I'd stated earlier, um, it's, it's more in favor of the public. Um, there was some language in there that could have been a, a First Amendment violation for our residents. Um, so you know, that is what the attorney had recommended, um, for our language. Any questions?
Um, what, what, what prompted this, what brought it to our attention?
Um, actually, it's kind of funny how this all trickles down. But there was a, um, on the Parks Facebook page, there was a post deleted. And then that kind of escalated to First Amendment issues. And you know, if we have a Facebook page, this will be coming up in the future, I don't know how soon in the future, but. If you are on Facebook and you're utilizing Facebook and it's an open forum, the sky's the limit pretty much on what you can say. If it's unlimited, it's just for updates and, and the public is not, not allowed to post. So all of our Facebook's, uh, pages in the city to include parks and police and fire and the Evansdale Facebook page, they're all open forums at this time. So that kind of, you know, we started kind of digging in some of our rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you.
You know, um, yeah, Steve made an interesting point about how do we allow for more than three minutes? Is that practical? I, I could see where it could be possible if you had a particular item, that it could potentially, um, be more than three minutes. And, um, I assume you have that discretion if you wanted to. Granted, uh, his mechanism about calling before and, and trying to get on the agenda, it, it's an interesting. Granted, his mechanism about calling before and trying to get on the agenda, it's an interesting idea. I don't know how the council feels about it, but it seemed like it wouldn't be necessary from time to time.
No, I'm with you, Dick. I, the whole point of where I see the three minutes isn't anything to silence anybody or to try to take them off of the platform. I see it more for, I can talk forever. And sometimes people need to just tell me that, make your point and move on instead of reiterating and rambling. So I think it's just been kind of the fair, just, I also think the same way, just in our discussions and things, it's respect out of all of our time and it's a respect out of your time that we're not here till nine o'clock every time. Well, we get on a hot topic, if you don't give them a time limit, it can go on for a long, long night. And we've had those in before. Now, I'm also with Dick to where if it is something of, you know, another hot topic comes up and we have a ton of public discussion that come in, that if they do, yeah, not a necessary, but very obtainable step, whether it is a phone call ahead or some sort of notification email, hey, I would like to speak on this specific topic tonight. And, yeah, I would love to hear more of what Waterloo does. Again, I hate using that because I know we always don't try to compare ourselves to Waterloo, but just what other forums do. And we even called down some bigger communities that may have a huge, so what Cedar Rapids, what Des Moines to allow for. Because, yeah, my goal is absolutely not to stifle the voice. I mean, I'd love to turn out tonight. That's the whole point. This is an open forum that is supposed to be for the community.
Yep.
It also helps getting the word of things going out to our community. The hot topic right now is the one with the water billing. Well, it's the wastewater treatment plant. You know, there's been a lot of confusion there. Anything more we can do to help spread the facts out, I don't want to put a cap on, so there's my speech.
Thank you, Justin.
I like Steve's suggestion. That's a pretty good mechanism, I think, worth considering before we adopt them, I think.
Yeah, I would say that is not on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
That's not part of this amendment. I will reflect back to the attorney, see how things have been written maybe a little bit differently to handle, you know, some kind of discussions.
And I have, Mayor, just offhand, and this is something, because again, I can totally respect that it's government, it's politics that all of a sudden put out a, hey, we're changing what you can and can't come into it. So I could see the reaction of, whoa, why are they trying to take away? The edits, are we able to publish what was edited? Because when I saw it from the attorney, I actually, it cleaned things up. Instead of having a paragraph or it was one sentence, very clear. It was the proper legal language. It wasn't just kind of the nice friendly language. It was just, this is it. And I would love to be able to share that of what specifically it had.
Right. Well, the one that's on the agenda tonight is the old one.
Okay.
And I have one here in my packet. I'd be happy to make copies for anybody.
So, yeah, again, the audience members that were curious, I would invite, please grab a copy and then we can absolutely see, so you're able to compare. And then, yeah, well, it was nicely bulleted out, not in the one in our packet tonight, but one I saw earlier in the week.
This one is just, this one is the clean, yeah.
Yeah, of just what it was, so, and what was changed.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dick, for the part of support on that. I think if we go to this, I hear a lot of people in town say, you can't talk at the meeting anyway. You get cut off. You got forty-seven seconds. You've used a minute and a half of your money. I think if you make a five-minute rule on people that want to talk about a topic, you're going to get more transparency. You're going to get more dialogue. You're going to get more communication rather than going, well, you got cut off at thirty-seven seconds tonight. How's that feel? Because what you think is important and what we think is important is two different things. And you're here to listen to our thoughts and our wishes and make those decisions. So I'm asking you to please talk it over and I hope to support this like I'd visit with the mayor and put this on the agenda. And if you vote it down, you vote it down. Then that'll be record, you voted it down. But if you voted to let that five-minute thing go on topics that people call in before noon, I would greatly appreciate it. And I think a lot of citizens in town would appreciate that same thing.
I can see on a hot-button topic that, you know, call ahead, something like that could be good. Keeping in mind that if somebody is going to, you know, come at any time with any kind of discussion to keep it organized. Because, not saying you don't, just there's been some that it's not organized. And then, you know, you're getting cut off or you're getting told you got forty-seven seconds.
Or you're repeating yourself.
You know, keep your thoughts organized. You know you're coming here. Not pointing this at you, I'm just saying. You know, that would help get your case across. And, you know, if we've got a time and a hot-button issue, I can see where something like what you're talking about could be good.
All right, well, I appreciate your time thinking about it, let me know.
Thank you, council.
Well, I think we can go one step further as far as what I'm hearing. Ladies, I'll absolutely turn the floor to you as well, but I would like to see it, you know, you ask some more fact-finding and then as an item that we can look to amend and add something to this at the next...
Is that your motion at table, sir?
So I'm okay passing this tonight. I have no problems with what it was and the differences. So I did like the cleaner language. It absolutely removed a couple of the repetitive pieces. So I'm in favor of passing this to put this in, just to make it clean and simple. But I absolutely would look at, you know, an amendment to it right away. Because, yeah, I think that's at least worth looking into for sure, so ladies.
That's fine.
You have anything more? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't cutting anybody off or...
Don't want to repeat anything, sorry.
Exactly, I don't want to repeat anymore.
I have been to meetings before and they were, I think, I can't remember which ones it was, but if somebody had something to speak about and you had some time left, he could give that time to the another speaker. Is that a possibility too? I mean, I don't want to see this carry on and on and on, but, you know, we don't usually have a half a dozen people up here, so it ain't going to hold up too long.
Can I ask, is somebody asking for more time a thing?
Yeah, well, sometimes you need it.
No? Okay. I didn't know if that was discretionary.
No.
Okay, thank you.
And three minutes lasts a long time, believe me. I mean, it really is, yeah.
We could always do, conduct a demonstration, three minutes of quiet time.
Yeah, we've only even gotten close to it once tonight, so...
I have seen what John's talking about. I think they do it in Congress, maybe.
Yeah, they can see their time in the chair.
That's not a good, that's not a good comparison.
If Mr. O'Brien would have wanted to, you know, say, well, he gets my three minutes, you know, who are we to say no? But...
Okay.
Well, I'll take a motion to approve this first version of the amended general rules.
Yeah, so moved to approve us sitting today and then obviously my stated side request for next time.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number nineteen is mayor council reports. Like has been stated before by Mr. Siebel, it was a great seventy-fifth anniversary for our fire department. I think that we had a great turnout. The car show was fabulous, probably one of the greatest car shows we've had in our city. And especially just for bringing it back because I don't think we've had it since 2010. There was a lot of people out there. It was great to see everybody out and about having a great time. Just want to, just say thank you, thank you, chief. Just want to say thank you to the fire department for all that they did to make this great, this event possible and to make it fantastic as it was. Twenty-two minutes on the fireworks, very impressive. Also want to thank our Public Works crew as they worked countless hours getting the grounds ready with fencing and the mud volleyball, getting the pits dug out and just helping, generally helping pretty much all weekend, even when a cow needed to be cleaned up after, if I remember right. Police staff for being there to support our event as well. And just all the many volunteers from our community that it takes to have an event like that go successful. You have ticket takers, you have food vendors, you have, you know, people that are helping with the beverage carts and et cetera. So thank you to everyone that was a part of it. Okay.
Can't follow that up, no, so, nope, I...
As another thing, I, one person that I know went to it first time, she's gone to the parade in the city of Evansdale. She says she's never seen so much candy thrown out.
The parade was fantastic. It was so great.
It went on forever. It done.
Yep. Big thank you to the committee and I'm not going to start naming names because I know I will miss somebody and I will feel terrible for them. But just the committee that put it all together, the massive amount of time, the, as much love as they have for the community. But if you went up to them like Saturday night and said, this was so good, are you ready to do it again next year? Every single one of them went, nope. Which is very typical. I'm not saying they didn't love it because it's, I always kind of come into the motherhood, you know, right when you go through the pregnancy, are you ready to be pregnant again? No. But they get the baby fever labor on and then maybe they're back again. But no, it was, you know, thank you just from the support of all the sponsors. Please be sure, you know, on the pages, we tried to advertise the banners that were up, covered a large portion of the costs with it. And then again, yes, of all the city services, the volunteers, the committee, just a ton of people makes it happen. And yes, it was, it was a killer event in all the right ways, so.
Council? We are about ready to end this meeting, Mark.
Granted, good. Good job, fire department. I never see any of you as well as that. There's some older people that might be on here yet. When Evansdale had the first fire convention, you stayed by all of them seven years. That's what got Deerwood Park started, the renovations and everything that was there. It wouldn't have happened without a lot of people in the fire department back then doing it. And that was a lot of it. It took a lot of hours to do it.
And they still do.
Yes, they do.
They do, but I'm just saying it.
Yep.
It was glad to see that many people enjoying the town again. It's been a long time. I mean, since the old cucumber days, you know, that's, that used to be the golden thing the town was packed. Two quick questions. I know the open meetings law and all this talk and everything, but when you go to number eight, the resolution calendar, I mean, I can't believe that this much stuff on a resolution calendar, there's no open discussion out to the public what's going on. There's just a motion, second, vote. And we should be able to, as public, ask for things to be taken off, to be talked about. I mean, this, the big quick start development policy, the whole thing. I believe, I haven't heard of planning and zoning or seen anything in any minutes. Do you think doing a planned development, that planning and zoning, would have had this thing in front of them? And gone to, it wouldn't find you a cone? Never happens.
Okay, Mark.
Well, I'm just saying.
And that was, you don't know. That all went for the final plat before the final plat was accepted for Eagles Landing. It went through planning and zoning.
Original, but things have changed, the whole thing. Originally, it was going to be restaurants and hotel and everything out in front. Now the whole thing of what they're talking about doing out there has changed to gas stations and that type of thing. So, and the only other question I had on all that stuff that got run right on through was basically, how much is it costing to tear out that road to redo the original one to make it semi-capable?
It was, it was part of the whole project, Mark. We can't separate it out, so...
The redoing, it's part of the whole project. But I really believe the engineer designed that road that way. And if a semi can't make a corner down there, that this road is supposed to be commercial, that we're paying to redo a roadway, to tear it out and redo it. The engineer ought to be cut, paying the cost for the whole thing. And every resident I talked in this town, brought it up to them, agrees the same thing. Why do we pay him to tear the road out, brand new road out, if it's ready when a semi can't bring it out?
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else from council? Take a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.